...to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, aside from this, the approval of the agenda? You have a motion in the second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The election of the secretary.
I move to, like, carry the proclamation as Secretary of the Board of Education in 2014-15.
So, we have a motion in the second for two. Those in favor? No? Thank you. Okay, you want to vote?
We need to vote.
Oh, we do need to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, well, we'll move on to the appointment of the treasurer. I don't have that page right here. I need to go there.
See what?
She moved her head.
Did you find that page? I probably just didn't read it. Okay. So, we just need a motion.
Oh, nothing.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Sharon Cher, a first mate, as the treasurer for the board. For which she has a vote, please, please. We have motion in the second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move to the consent agenda items. So, if you have any things you'd like to fill out?
I move through the consent agenda items of present. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move to per public participation.
Can I ask a question during public participation? Um, I can't remember what were the main, you know, the part. When we say or maybe directed to Mr. Haney, you also, did we talk about the Honors Bank?
I don't know.
Well, I think we need to say, or I'd like to say, thank Mr. Haney and Mr. Boba, all of his sponsors, and especially Mr. Rudolph and Mrs. Simply Line for bringing that back and she could show us in the poll because it had always been, my opinion, it was probably the most important banquet because it focused on student academic achievement. And I think having it back in the way that it went was for the kids, it just didn't cost them, so, thank you especially to Mr. Rudolph.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was a great night. It's good to celebrate academic, you know, in a way like that. And I think it's, we had a lot of positive comments.
Mr. Haney was a little bit rusty, but I'm sure he will.
He'll get back.
Yeah, exactly. I'll work on that. Mr. Nix also has a little match to give to Mr. Rudolph.
Some of you guys may have heard already, Taylor Warner, sophomore at the high school, was awarded the Gatorade Missouri Tracking Field Athlete of the Year. She's, uh, she's won it twice for cross-country. This is her first time winning it for tracking field, so she's actually earned the award, which is an extremely prestigious award, three times in her two years of high school.
And if I'm not mistaken, she's in an up to 10 percent off, is correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is it?
Yeah, that girl's track team is, I think, is 4.0 or higher on their team GPA.
Now, are there public descriptions? Is this, is this how we do the sense of all reports or we're not doing?
No press call report.
I would like to say gladly that we made another month without any break due to inclement weather, so that's like two in a row now, but we are rolling.
That's great. Okay, we'll move on to the recording of the superintendent.
Uh, there's several notes of appreciation in there. I won't go into those individually, but would like to note that goes from there. The auditor is coming for a pre-audit visit on July 15th and 16th, and then will come back for, uh, to finish up the audit, then August 20th and 22nd. We always look forward to the auditors being around and interacting with the office staff. Summer school update. We have 52 students currently enrolled in extended school year services, and those run through Thursday of this week. Today, we started the second semester of high school credit recovery. We had 28 students in attendance, and of course, that will run, today was day one, it runs for three weeks, so, whether that date is, three weeks from now, I think it's July 11th, and it will be the final day of high school credit recovery for summer school. Uh, summer maintenance, housekeeping, things are progressing well. Been out and in some buildings, making good progress, we have huge major projects going on this summer, so, it's enabled them to maybe get ahead a curve a little bit, which is, which is good for them. And I know that's, that's one thing that, when you think about our buildings, the number that we have, and all that they do in the summertime to get them ready to roll for when school starts in August, pretty amazing work they're very able to accomplish, and making good progress on that. MSBA Fall Conference?
I wanted to let you know that Althea is all registered. It will be Thursday, September 25th through Sunday, September 28th. I'll just need to get with all of you at some point, and, you know, who your spouse is going, what you're checking in day, and that kind of work, so, I'll be getting in touch with you as soon as possible. I'll also add in here, mainly regarding the community, we have a centennial committee because this year marks our 100th year of graduating students in the community, and we are looking for a member of ALIA that will loan us, or if you want to donate and give it to us, that'd be great, but if you want to loan us stuff, we want to do displays around all four of the buildings for people to see and just kind of see our history. So, if you have anything, please call the district office, 883-4500, extension 2005, and talk to Becca, and she will take care of that, so, that's all I have.
One thing I would add on the MSBA conference as well is that we did get on it early. We do have reservations at Pantera. We don't know at this point if it's in the main complex or if it will be out in the estates, and that will be determined, you know, based on when you get there and check in it. They don't specify where they're going to place you, so the earlier you get there, the better chance you have of getting in the actual complex instead of down in the estate. But we were able to get reservations for everyone at the main complex. And the first person there registered, will you mind? Uh, I'm not sure.
I mean, seriously, I mean, can't wait. Your representative, can I get him to?
I mean, we're all registered together, so I would think that the first person there, which will be Martha, in all likelihood, doesn't she go a day early for, or something leaderships got? I know this has been something that's been important to Martha, so, I'll speak to her sometime, we'll see now and then.
I would expect this always.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a possibility. But don't forget the date, and Dr. Fleet will get with you, iron up the details as far as moving, and all that's going to be important, so, more info to come.
So, not first, but next?
Yes.
Are we going to unfish business, the safety update?
Yeah, and there's information in your, uh, in your packet. Basically, I just wanted to kind of go back and revisit, uh, all the things, well, not all the things that we did, but revisit the process that we went through a little over a year ago, when we had Dennis Lewis with Ed Yousef come in and did a complete risk assessment and school safety audit of the entire district campus. He came up with some recommendations, which then went through building level committees and went through the district safety committee, and were eventually approved by the Board of Education. And just kind of as a reminder, we prioritize those into three areas, and if you'll look down through there, I mean, it's basically the same report that presented to you at that time, only there's updates. If you'll look by each item, for example, item 1A says limit public access and address points to one main entrance per building that's completed. You know, we're still working out some tweaks with, uh, the cards, but hopefully that will all be taken care of in the coming months before we begin this fall. And I'm not going to go down each item, but I wanted to give you an update that those items have been either completed or are in progress. Most of them have been completed though, and are there any questions at this point or concerns or?
Well, basically, from form, I mean, people, they're open to main entrance, they're all be posted and everything, so, somebody just can't walk through and install.
Correct. And that was, that was the goal. The issue that we're having right now is the cards that staff and students will have for some of those entry points where students need access, that sort of thing. Those, uh, we've been having trouble finding one that we can print, so that people have their photo and barcode and all that, that information on there for school lunch purposes and that sort of thing. So, we're still kind of fighting with the vendor a little bit to get that worked out, so that we have cards that we can print on site. But other than that, we had, initially we had some issues with the doors. Once, once they were turned, once the handle was turned, they didn't always spring back like they were supposed to, but for the most part, we've got those issues hanging around. Do I? Yeah, it has to do with, those have a chip in them to enable the door to open. It has to do with the chip and the printer that we have. Any questions on, any other questions on the, uh, safety update?
On the letter of agreement for, uh, in progress group elementary, the alarm button?
Uh, there has to be a system put in that, matter of fact, I've been in communication with the same company that did the alarm system at Fort House. And, uh, they have sent me a quo, but the guy I need to talk to is on a bicycle trip somewhere, and he's supposed to be back this, this coming week. But part of it is, is whether or not you have a virtual alarm button, like on a computer kind of, kind of thing that would send an alarm that way, or whether you have its own system. So, those, you have to have an individual system for each, each campus in order, in order to make it work the way it best, best means.
But you can't, I mean, with the current system, can't or can't?
You can't. You could, but there's some issues with that. And one of the issues is that if you tied in the current alarm system that's up there, then if you did have an emergency situation, you know, had to provide an armed and trigger kind of thing. Through that system, it sends a signal through the, through the fire alarm that goes to a company. They have to read the signal, then they have to call dispatch, and they have to interpret what's going on, then they have to call law enforcement. And that process takes time. And what we've seen with, with those kinds of situations is time is precious. And so, this would be an instantaneous, actually a button that could be pushed into the offices that would instantaneously call all law, all law, uh, law enforcement that was on duty, that would bypass the normal communication systems so that we could get someone here as quickly as possible.
Proud to them, and call, and, and, you wouldn't call a burn alarm system?
Yeah, that was the other issue, but you certainly wouldn't want it to go through that progression before it did, took contact with, uh, dispatch or law enforcement. That's a fairly expensive proposition.
I think we've come a long way with this.
Do you want to assess adopt budget for 2014-15?
Yeah, basically, at this point, we want to take the current budget, roll it over to the new year, waiting on additional information, more updated information with respect to, mainly on the revenue side. But I think last year, you adopted a budget in August, a new budget, so this would just take the current year budget, roll it over there, so we did that document.
Could you put a present value as a budget for 2014-15 school?
Do you have a motion in the second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Coordinator?
Uh, yes, we, uh, we kind of started talking about this back in the middle of the year, whenever we started making some personnel changes and hiring new, new people at district's office and so on and so forth. And we realized that we had a need for, for someone that does have a counseling background to kind of coordinate the counseling department mainly in two ways. One is that they have monthly meetings where they make sure that all the buildings are on the same page, so to speak, that they talk about issues that are kind of hot topics with, um, with counseling department. And what we felt like is that we needed someone with that counseling background that could kind of coordinate those meetings that could determine what the topics of the agenda should be and actually run those meetings. And so, that's part of it. The second piece of that is, you know, due to a variety of things that occurred in this past year and our need for crisis counseling, intervention, that sort of thing, and we became pretty aware that we need someone with that counseling background that can kind of coordinate those services in the event that we need those things. So, in talking with, with Ms. Wyler and, uh, Ms. Jokers, came up with an idea to have a counselor coordinator position. Basically, those two main duties is to operate those monthly meetings and also to coordinate crisis counseling services in the event that we need.
I'll move to approve addition of the counselor coordinator effective for 2014-15.
Second.
Do we have a motion in the second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Girls' golf?
Interest has been expressed in forming a girls' golf team for the coming school year. To give you a little bit of an overview, what we're looking to possibly do is to add that sport on probationary basis, kind of based on participation numbers, success of the program, fully understanding that it's a sport that is fairly inexpensive to get started, it doesn't require uniforms, doesn't require facilities, those kinds of things. So, I talked with Mr. Nix and with Mr. Haney, and Mr. Nix has some additional information that, uh, that he can provide to you, and I think there's some information in your packet as well, so.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
If, um, do they play or compete in the spring or the fall, the fall? If we decide to have a team, a girls' golf team, would they be able to do it this year?
Yes. And that was one of the things that we, that we looked at. You know, we have, I think, two girls that are participating on the boys' team, and with some success. And it's, uh, it's virtually impossible for them to advance and stay and play playing against, uh, the boys. I think they offer the boys keys, they, you know, play the boys' game. So, we have girls that are participating on the boys' golf. Yes. Uh, so, that's, that's one thing. You know, we took into consideration things like impact on other fall sports. We took into consideration startup costs, you know, the potential benefit to the students involved, which is really the, the key thing, potential benefits to the district, you know, recognition, that sort of thing, and felt like that this would be something that we could at least try for, you know, for a period of time, see if there are enough numbers, enough success. A girls' golf team is five? Six. Six, uh, that, uh, in order to compete as a team, but you're not required to have six. So, if you have one, or two, or three, that can still participate as an individual in, in matches and, uh, not participate as a team. Are there several other schools around here that have girls' teams?
Um, very few, but there are some. Farmington has one. Many St. Louis schools have, have girls' golf teams. And if this were approved, we would look at, of course, starting the schedule, which would, we would look at the St. Louis area first, to put that schedule together, to try to minimize the travel as much as possible. We'd like to start, Farmington and the schools closest to us, and then as we have to travel out, we travel out. And I don't think that we would have to go much further than the St. Louis to get tournaments, matches.
Girls don't play this very often.
There's states in October, correct?
What's that?
There's eight playoffs in October.
Yes, October. I think it would have very minimal impact on our existing fall sports also. It's not a sport that takes a lot of girls to do. It's not a sport that I think will draw 25 girls to either. You only need, I think, Dr. Lindsay was actually correct, usually you enter six athletes and they score the top five, if I'm correct. So, you know, it takes five or six girls to make a team, and if you don't have that, if you only got, as Dr. Lindsay was saying, two or three girls, they can still compete, they just wouldn't compete as a team at that point. We've got, the two, the two girls that played this spring were both freshmen this past four years, so you're looking at, um, for those two, probably at least three years that they could, that they would be able to play with other girls instead of having to compete as boys this spring.
I, I'll move to, uh, the addition of the girls' golf, golf team effective for the 2014-15.
Do we have a motion in the second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move to the Chromebooks purchase.
Uh, as you know, there are several districts in our area that are making good Chromebooks from our current netbooks. We saw an opportunity there to, to make an upgrade in our technology. Chromebooks are better in a lot of ways from a district's perspective in comparison to netbooks. And Chromebooks were considered, what was it, three years ago, four years ago? Uh, we went through the process, and netbooks were identified, three years ago. And at that time, it wasn't feasible because of the issue with Microsoft Office, seeing the products that was, is not operable on, on Chromebooks. And now, that is no longer an issue. Google has, has made some arrangements with Microsoft, and that part has been worked out. Chromebooks are less expensive, they are more durable, they are easier to manage from both an individual device perspective and also from a network perspective. And what doing a leasing option would allow us to do is, instead of phasing in, having Chromebooks in some classes and netbooks in other classes and trying to keep track of all that, it was actually cheaper for us to look at a lease option over three years and go ahead and do Chromebooks for all students in grade six through 12 at one time on this lease purchase option. It was savings to the district of approximately $35,000 to $40,000 when we actually started running the numbers per year, and is a better device for our needs at this point. We also found out that there are many districts in our area that are either currently with Chromebooks or are moving to Chromebooks, and we felt like there would be good opportunities for our teachers to share information and ideas with, with other teachers in the area, with other districts. We're already, you know, trying to plan a professional development day with a couple other districts where all three districts will get together in one place and have training, share information, share ideas with respect to, uh, Chromebooks. We did go out to our five local institutions. Not all of them do lease purchase options. There's some information in your, in your packet that kind of details those. So, we can get the two proposals back, one from US Bank and one from Regions Bank. The US Bank proposal is 1.75 percent interest, and Regions Bank is 2.60 percent interest. So, at this point, any questions about the lease purchase option, Chromebooks, if you agree with it?
So, what happens, uh, through source, we would have to go with, uh, technology changes, like we just, like years ago, we had netbooks and we had Chromebooks. What happens if?
Well, actually, three years ago, we decided to go with netbooks. So, we were kind of at a point where, where you would start looking at that. The nice thing with lease purchase options, options at the end of the three years, if you want to go in a different direction because technology is updated or there's a better option out there, much like the current situation with Chromebooks over netbooks, then you have that option to do that at that point. So, it seemed to make sense from a financial standpoint, also makes sense from, from an instructional and educational standpoint.
So, at the end of the lease purchase, so, the Chromebooks are?
Yes.
The current, the netbooks that we're going to have be placed into the elementary schools?
Yes, the best of them, basically, they're going through them now. So, that was part of the issue is that third grade devices really need to be replaced. This will probably allow us the opportunity to go to truly one-to-one to second grade level as well with netbooks. Fifth grade need to be replaced. So, when you figure all those costs in, plus the, uh, the need to do sixth grade and ninth grade startup devices, which we got stable netbooks, this makes sense to, to. So when you figured all those costs in, plus the, uh, the need to do sixth grade and ninth grade startup devices, if you need that stable netbooks, uh, this makes sense to, to make a special company.
So then our grades, uh, two, three, four, and five will also have?
They will have netbooks, yes.
You mentioned the professional development day with the new device. I'm assuming it's supposed to software recovery, same, but do they get some training on Google Docs and such or?
Yeah, they're already, uh, Nancy Tunes is already providing some training, uh, for our teachers and then kind of get used to the device. There's not a huge difference. You know, there's some other nice things with Chromebook, is the battery life is longer, uh, startup time is much quicker, uh, you know, those, those kinds of things. So, uh, but yes, the professional development day would be basically a sharing of information and ideas between districts, uh, between teachers in those districts. There's a variety of, of apps that are available. Many of them are education-specific, uh, so really as far as capabilities go, uh, you know, we would see that, that we'll have same capabilities or possibly greater capabilities with Chromebooks. That's what we have.
Move to approve vote from US Bank for lease purchase of Chromebooks and authorize the super today, if necessary, that must be entered into the lease agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second. Russell Baker?
All right.
Close motion here. Mr. Baker, would you propose?
I move to the Board of Education, hold a closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote, calling the regular open meeting of July twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, to be held in Yard Dev Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, St. David, Missouri. For purposes of discussion, voting upon the following items, goodness. Legal action, cause of action or litigation, lease purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees. Classic covation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials. Preparation for negotiation with employee groups. Specification for competitive meeting is not approved or published. Sealed bids or related documents, sealed proposals, or related documents that all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to a negotiated contract or a contract elected to. Individuals identified with personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Records protected from disclosure by law. Records related to invisible hotline established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing. Confidential or privileged communication with an auditor. Exending a proposed security system and structural plan of district property. Records identified when not, when not, would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of the configuration of components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network. Credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and technical feed. Access codes or authorization codes are used to protect electronic transactions. After the move, the notice of this meeting and intent of the interview is posted, required by law.
Do we have motion in a second? Roka, Eric Bawser?
Yes.
David Morgan?
Yes.
Paul Brother?
Yes.
Tom Dandy? Eric Galloway?
Yes.
Robert was absent, you're blue on?
Yes.
Motion carried six oh.
Do we, uh, what was the motion, the, 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 the?
Second.
Russell Baker?
Uh.
Close.